And you're Eric?
Yes, my name is Eric Arbeni. I'm a Senior Community Planner at the Old Colony Planning Council in Brockton. Plimpton is one of the seventeen communities that we serve. So this is the first meeting of Plimpton Housing Production Plan. I didn't know how big the meeting was going to be, and put welcome introductions. About housing production plans, we'll talk about the housing needs and demand in Plimpton, barriers, opportunities, goals, and next steps. So we'll have some discussion if that's okay tonight. So OCPC, a little bit about us, the Old Colony Planning Council. We're a regional planning agency, or RPA, we're one of thirteen in the state. We were created in 1967, this is our fiftieth year, to improve the physical, social, and economic conditions of the district. So kind of in the urban renewal time, there was a need to do some regional planning instead of each town doing their own thing. So we continue with that. Like I said, we work with seventeen member municipalities in southeastern Mass. Variety of planning disciplines, housing, economic development, transportation, and a variety of different regional issues, water, waste water, things of that nature. Like I said, we're based in Brockton, right across from City Hall, although we serve Avon, Stoughton to the north, and then down Plimpton, Plymouth, Kingston, Duxbury, the Bridgewater's, Hanson, Pembroke, over to Easton. Got to get a sense of where we are. So about housing production plans. So you may or may not know Chapter Forty-B, probably everyone's probably heard of it. It's a state statute that was created in 1969 to encourage communities to increase their affordable housing inventories to ten percent of their total housing stock. There was a need at the time, again, this is kind of in the same time we were created as an agency, urban renewal, we need to increase, they wanted to increase the amount of affordable housing in a community. A lot of communities, most cities are above ten percent, a variety of public housing units and complexes, whereas around here, New Bedford, Fall River, Brockton, all above ten percent, Boston, above ten percent. So if you look at the list, the state provides, a lot of cities are over the ten percent threshold. Most towns, smaller towns are under that ten percent threshold. So if you are under ten percent, as is Plimpton and as are most communities, local zoning board of appeals, or ZBAs, can approve affordable housing development proposals under flexible rules. That means they can bypass your local zoning ordinances to put in a, what they call a Chapter Forty-B, or an affordable housing complex. Doesn't have to be, all units have to be affordable, at least a quarter of those units are affordable, then they can bypass your local zoning ordinances. So I think in Plimpton here, I may be, is the zoning sixty thousand square foot lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We have seventeen towns, I sometimes forget. So sixty thousand square foot lots, I know Plimpton's kind of unique because, you know, you have on-site septic and water. So they could go, they don't have to acquiesce to that. They could do it on ten thousand square foot lots, say they built their own private septic, private treatment plant, yes?
I have a question, but do you want me to just wait till the end?
No, I think if you want to answer, ask the questions now, that's, I'm okay with that, if you guys are okay.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, sure.
The wording of that first bullet is, I used to be on the planning board.
Oh, okay.
We never had to face a Forty-B.
Okay.
So I got my information about that through folklore.
Okay.
But the wording is interesting to me because it says it can approve affordable housing developments, and it was always my understanding that the town had no say.
Technically, they have a choice. You can, the zoning, the developer comes and says, I want to put in, I'll just make it up, say fifty units on X property. The zoning board of appeals listens to the presentation, they can either accept it without conditions, they can reject it, or they can accept it with conditions. Listening to town council, I said I was on the zoning board of appeals in my own particular town, a Forty-B is in front of us right now. So most communities accept the Forty-B, and they put conditions on it, mitigation, to mitigate the impacts of that. If it, if the town, the zoning board of appeals says, no, we're not going to allow it because we don't like it, and we don't like Forty-B, you know, whatever, the developer can appeal to the Housing Appeals Court. And the Housing Appeals Court, from my knowledge, almost always upholds a developer. The need for affordable housing usually outweighs whatever the town says for rejection. There's a lot of different scenarios that can play out, but the need for affordable housing throughout the state is, seems to be supreme, so. But you, yes, you can, they can approve it, they also cannot approve it. It's up to the zoning board. I could use the example of my own town, you know, we have, I live in Medway. I used to live in Brockton, so I know the area quite well. So we have assistance, the developer has provided assistance to do peer review on different plans and whatnot, and we also have somebody from the state serving as a consultant to us as well. And I should note, we have a town planner, so it's a lot, it's a lot of work, you know, to not have a town planner and go through this process. There are, there are resources available to people if you have a Forty-B, that you're not kind of just on your own. So if a community adds affordable housing units at an annual rate of half percent to one percent, the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, which oversees all this, will certify the community for a one-year period if you have, if you develop point five percent of your annual housing units, if you develop in one year, or one percent over a two-year period, the zoning board of appeal, the DHCD certifies your community, and that means you can, the ZBA can reject it without fear of being overrun from the Housing Appeals Court.
Again, I'm sorry, but that's a one-half of a percent of new housing units?
No, total housing units in the town. So Plimpton has, I think, a thousand and forty-two housing units, so if you produced half a percent of a thousand and forty-two, I don't have the number off the top of my head, I'm terrible at that. So if you have one, ten, it's not very many, I was going to say half a percent.
Yeah, well, ten percent would be a hundred, so one percent would be ten, so five houses.
Yeah.
And that's if we're under the ten percent?
You are under ten percent, yeah.
Right, but in terms of the flow chart, it's like, are you under ten percent, yes, no?
Yes.
And this only comes in if we're under?
Yeah.
So that it's not like pressuring the town to grow at the rate of point five to one percent?
Yeah, if you're over ten percent, you can reject it already. So if a town has more than ten percent, Brockton, Fall River, New Bedford, any town that has more than ten percent, the ZBA can say, no, we're okay. So that's another thing. Some towns continue to increase their amount of affordable housing for various reasons that works for them, but yeah, over ten percent, you're usually not going to have a developer come in unless the community is working with the developer. There's also like community-sponsored FortyBs, or friendly FortyBs, they call them. Another, say if a community is certified, I just kind of said it, the ZBA can deny a comprehensive permit, so it's not consistent. So if you're there wanting to build those ten percent, I mean, ten thousand square foot lots, but you already have your, you met your, you get certified by the state, the ZBA can deny it and not ever prize them coming back and the Housing Appeals Court saying, nope. Some cases, the ZBA can also issue a denial if one and a half percent of the developable land is used for affordable housing in all of the town. That's usually, usually not met, usually affordable housing is usually rather dense. You know, it's usually senior units, public housing units, and they're usually pretty dense, so one and a half percent. But we'll look at that, you know, when we're working through the plan, we'll see the properties that Plimpton has and see how much percent it is. I'm pretty sure it's under one and a half, but we'll look anyway.
Who defines what developable land is?
That is a good question, I don't really know at the moment, I'll be honest with you. I have, we'll go back to the office and we'll work with our GIS staff, they have access to Mass GIS and all the newest layers. It might be, I'm thinking it may be an older, an older layer. They did, the state did a build-out in two thousand, I don't know if that is what they're referring to, but I would have to, I would have to look, to be honest with you, I don't know.
Yeah, we had a build-out done.
Yeah, yeah, every town in the state had a build-out done in two thousand. We've tried to do a build-out sense, but they can be kind of wonky, it's, they're very interpretive, you know, there's really not one set rule of what a build-out is. But I will look, I will look into that, and we'll let you know for sure.
It was met with a lot of denial.
Communities develop housing production plans, understand local housing needs and demand, what's in the town, guide the amount, what type of housing you should be developing or looking to develop, and then set the numerical goal, you know, try to get certified, low and moderate, for low and moderate income housing. And that's, that's something we work together on, it's just not me just making up a number, it's ideally, you know, a back and forth between us and coming up with a number. Local communities, this is not unique to any type of type, any type of community, Bridgewater, Duxbury, Kingston, Lakesville, Marshville, Middleborough, all have approved housing production plans. We're also, actually, we're working with Bridgewater right now and updating theirs. I should note that these plans are good for a five-year period. Once they are approved, they have to be approved at the local level by both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Once they are approved by the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, they get sent to the state for final approval.
So there's no town vote on it?
No, just the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. We have public meetings, we can have more public meetings, as many as you want, that's fine, but it doesn't have to go to town meeting or anything. We're also working with Halifax and Whitman on their housing production plans, so. So as you'll, as you'll see, the housing production plan, comprehensive housing needs and demand assessment, we kind of look at as much as, we look at a lot of data and information, we can look at the general template we use, but we can go more in-depth, or less in-depth, whatever you want. We look at development constraints and opportunities, obviously Plimpton does a variety of constraints with the wetlands and the floodplains and whatnot. Try to set some affordable housing goals, and then some implementation strategies. And we have some, some goals and strategies to kind of get you going, but like I said, there's probably at least a hundred different communities that have approved housing production plans, so they're all over the place, these housing production plans. So a lot of them have some of the same ideas, some not so much, so there's a lot to go on, we're not the first to do it.
Eric, could we do some type of survey with residents to determine what the demand is as part of this?
Sure, we, yeah, communities have done that, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
But there is, there is a, we talked about it now, communities have done surveys to try to get an idea of what the actual, what the people think. Sometimes, I've done a lot of town meetings and, it's tough for people to get to town meetings, they work, I know, I, you know, besides the boards I serve on, I don't really go to many, so I have to admit, it's hard. But we could do it online, we've done surveys for, we did a couple economic development studies, we can do surveys, online surveys, we can put paper copies in the library and town hall, that sort of thing. We use Survey Monkey, and we could, we can advertise it, you know, with the help of the town, put it on the town's webpage, we could put it in the newspaper, the Alphac Forum or something, put a link or something to it, or direct it to the town webpage, so that's something we can do and get some town input, it's always, always good to get as much input as possible.
Well, that's, I mean, I'd hate for us to come up with a plan and it's not really what the people want.
Well, that's pretty useless. It's less what they don't want than more than what they don't want.
We can, I can, I can put together a kind of a template or some thoughts of what other communities have done, trying to get an idea of what type of development, what type of housing people want to see. Always helps, the more public input you have, the more, yep.
Sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead.
So, hi Colleen, I blame you for my presence here. The housing needs, again, it's folklore, but I think a lot of us suspect that there are a lot of units that people are renting at rates that might be considered eligible for affordable housing, but they're secret, they're underground. And before we would start to develop additional housing, I would really like to see how we can get those on the books. And that would establish the urgency as well as what's already working in a way for people, unless we're finding out that, oh, all of those units happen to have septic systems that have failed, and they've been, you know, flushing viruses into their neighbors' yards.
Yep, yep.
So how do, how do we get a handle on that?
That's tough, that's tough, because you have to see what is actually going on in each house. I mean, the data you'll see today, some of it might be a surprise, but it's tough, because you know, I don't know what people do in their own individual houses, that's where it's, that's where, not to pass the buck, but that's more of, it's a town-issue enforcement, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know. That's more of where the town has to come in, and I don't know if it's the building inspector, or the zoning officer, to see what is going on in there. I don't, I don't have a solid answer for that.
Okay. I just hope that we would have a timeline that would allow that to happen, or even you.
We'll see.
So, I mean, we'll continue to work on it and look at it, I can reach out, I know a number of other planners who've done these before, so we can try to figure out what else has been done, trying to uncover, you know, get to the truth as much as possible, because it is, it is tough, we don't, we don't know. So we'll look at today demographics, the housing stock, and some housing affordability numbers. Again, before we go into that, I'm going to say that, I said it before the meeting started, that the demographics, housing stock, a lot of the information comes from the U.S. Census Bureau, or the American Community Survey, which is an estimate done by the U.S. Census Bureau. We also look at data from the Warren Group, which is a statewide, they collect a lot of housing data. And housing affordability, again, it's all going to come from the U.S. Census Bureau. I can note that when we're talking about it. So there is a margin of error, these numbers aren't concrete, just like anything, so please keep that in mind. So population, needs and demands, we're going to look at the population from nineteen eighty to, we use MassDOT projections, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, so you can see in nineteen eighty was nineteen seventy-four, was in two thousand and ten, it's increased almost a thousand, so you're up to twenty-eight, twenty. Using the MassDOT projections, see minimal growth over the next thirty years, up to three thousand and two people. I should note that there are a variety of different projections. We use MassDOT, I know that the UMass Donahue Institute has projections, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council has projections. We usually find it easier to go with one set instead of having four different sets of projections, because it just gets very confusing. Same thing with total households, you'll see nineteen eighty, six hundred and one households, two thousand and ten, increased forty percent to just over a thousand households, and by twenty forty, you're looking at about fourteen hundred households. You might say, well, the population's only going up two hundred people, the amount of households is going up four hundred. That's not a phenomenon that's local to Plimpton, that's a national phenomenon, they're decreasing household sizes, people with different living situations. Traditionally, it's been, you know, mom, dad, two kids, that's not so much anymore, it's a lot of single people, you know, people don't have as many kids, declining household sizes, we're looking at average median age is going up, so you know, people living on their own, people passing away, or people getting divorced, there's a lot of social aspects that contribute to this. Yeah, the traditional family idea of, you know, mom, dad, two kids is kind of something by the wayside, it's reflected in some of these statistics, which we'll get into a little more. So this is from the U.S. Census Bureau, this is just some household data, so family households, kind of the mom, dad, kid, in two thousand was eighty-six percent of the population, in two thousand and ten it went down to seventy-six percent of the population. So just in those ten years, you saw a ten percent decrease. Conversely, you saw a ten percent increase in non-family households, people living alone, non-related people living together, that sort of thing.
And this is still in Plimpton only?
This is Plimpton only, what I'm talking about now is Plimpton, if we talk about other towns, I'll note that, it'll be noted, yep. Households with kids under eighteen, see it went from forty-seven percent in two thousand to thirty-four percent in two thousand and ten, so. And conversely, households with folks sixty-five and over went from fifteen percent, almost doubled to close to thirty percent.
Excuse me again, but that's households with individuals, with any individuals sixty-five or older, or the whole household?
No, any individuals, just a single individual, yep. And you can see the average household size went from three point oh-nine to two point eight, well, you can't divide people in half, but kind of get the idea. So, you know, it decreased about ten percent, the average household size, people having less kids and whatnot. I can guarantee you that'll decrease when you see the twenty-twenty census.
Excuse me again.
Sure, yeah.
If a family divorces, and they share custody of the children, do the children get counted twice?
No, the children would get counted, would get counted once, I don't know the specific way they do that, but from what I understand, it's that they'd only get counted once. The OCPC, we've already got information, we try to help, we try to work, we work with the Census Bureau, we did in two thousand and ten, we'll do it again in twenty-twenty to try to get out, especially in Brockton, to try to get people counted. Plimpton's not an issue, but Brockton, you know, sometimes goes down in population from census, although we don't believe it goes down, there are people who don't want to be counted, so. Not an issue in most towns, but some towns, that's an issue. But, you know, not only we will help in Brockton, we'll help the Census Bureau in all seventeen of our towns to try to get the most accurate counts possible. So another kind of a neat graph, age distribution. We did it, kids under five, five to nineteen, kind of school years, twenty to thirty-four, kind of young professional, young adults, thirty-five to sixty-four, the bulk of population that's sixty-five years and older, you can see the population at the top, kind of tough to see on the screen, but sixty-five years and older, it went from six and a half percent of the population in two thousand to thirteen and a half percent of the population in twenty-ten, so it more than doubled just in the past, from two thousand to two thousand and ten. I can guarantee it probably only increased since then, this being twenty-seventeen. We use two thousand, two thousand and ten, because that's the actual count, the census. We'll use the American Community Survey, former updated estimates in certain areas, but feel like it's important to have this count. You can even see the kids under five, and the kids five to nineteen, that, those both went down in the past ten years, and we have some data on the schools, from the Dennett Elementary School, you can see too. There it is. So enrollment at the Dennett Elementary School, we got this from the Massachusetts Elementary and Secondary Education Department.
Do you know if it includes special needs?
I do not know if it includes.
This doesn't square with what we got from Sillway.
Nope, okay.
So maybe that there's special needs.
Special needs kids going out of district, you mean?
We have a chart that shows population in the classes.
Oh.
And over time, it's almost a straight line down, very subtle. Doesn't have the blips that this says?
Yeah, I mean, these blips are, I mean, it went from, you know, you can see, two forty-five to two thirty-one, it's not a huge thing, I mean, this is like really kind of focused up, focused on it. But if you have additional data, again, I got this from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
That includes special and needs children, that data that you cited?
It does.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I would, I would assume it does. If you have any other data, I'm more than happy to look at that. This is just me kind of going out, doing our initial data. So, you know, we can adjust this data, we can add additional data, and this is not all the data, there'll be more data in the plan, this is kind of just an overview of what we got right now. I should have a draft of this type of stuff in a plan format, where you could read it probably in a couple weeks. Again, it's not only this, it's more stuff, so you can get really a lot of data. So sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, I try to present it in ways that, not just tables, but graphs, so it's kind of easier to read. But you can see it has trended downward, you know, it kind of coincides with the number of kids in the area. So we look at household income, I should note, this is from the twenty-fifteen American Community Survey. So it's kind of a, kind of a funny graph, but I wanted to go get both the percentage and the number. So on the left-handed side of the screen, you'll see the number of households with that data, and on the right side of the screen, the percentage. They look almost the same because there were like a thousand and six households, so in terms of graphing it, it makes it kind of neat. So you can see less than ten thousand, people who have less than ten thousand dollars, it's probably twenty-five households, which is about two and a half percent of the population. You can see the largest block is a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, and I believe it was about forty-one percent of the households make more than a hundred thousand dollars or have an income of more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, yeah, there's still people who have less than fifty thousand, you know, you have folks on Social Security and whatnot, retirees. So this is the housing stock in town, housing stock like the buildings themselves. So ninety-two point three percent of the houses in Plimpton are single-family. If you count single-family attached houses, it's about ninety-four percent. You do have some mobile homes in town, and a twenty-plus unit, I'm assuming is the, is it Cranberry, no?
Woodlands.
Woodlands, I'm sorry, Woodlands, that's going to be accounting for that, yes.
What is a single-family attached unit?
Yeah, that's kind of, it's kind of a, it's, it's a, so it's a single-family attached, it's not a, it's not a two-unit structure, it's not a duplex, but there are some single-family attached houses where they're attached, but there's no like condo association, there's no, like you mow your own lawn, the person next to you mows your own lawn, there's no condo fee, there's no nothing, it's like you own the house, the next person owns their house.
We got some over on West Street.
Yeah, they're kind of a thing of the past, they're still, they're still out there, but, you know, most, anything that's built now is like a condo, you know, it's a duplex or something, and that would be noted. So we didn't see any, any two-unit, three-unit, four, five, nine-unit, anything reported.
What I remember is that when I was on planning board, this was before the zoning bylaws were reviewed by Ann's tenure, she's a land attorney. We looked at the zoning bylaws and said, huh, we don't, there was no explicit no, but there was also no explicit way that somebody could have more than one unit on a parcel of land.
Yes, yes, that's, that's something that, that might be an outcome of this plan, is that maybe you adjust the zoning bylaws.
So that you can have an in-law partner.
So you can have an in-law or an accessory dwelling unit, those are pretty popular. You know, sixty thousand square feet, that's a pretty big piece of property. I live on an acre, and I think it's huge, so sixty thousand, even more, so I feel like you could build a house next to me the same size I'm living in, or probably two of them, but, so an accessory dwelling unit is something that can be explored, that, hey, you might want to look at this accessory dwelling unit, people want to live, you know, have their in-laws or their folks live with them, you know, want to be separate, you know, it can be an independent accessory dwelling unit, or it could be in addition to your house. And there's ways to do it, there's ways to draft bylaws, so it doesn't look awkward or weird, and there's a lot of them out there, it's a pretty common thing to do. So this is another interesting one, this is the age of the housing stock, so this is like the age of the buildings in town. So Plimpton has a pretty long history, I think seventeen oh seven it was founded, so it's more than, you know, maybe three hundred years old, but most of the buildings, or most of the majority, I think it was sixty-eight percent, have been built after nineteen sixty of the buildings. You can see, I did the same thing before, the number on the left-hand side, the percentage on the right-hand side. So you can see most of the, most of the construction came between nineteen sixty and two thousand, specifically nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-nine, which also coincides with Route Three and Forty-four. The large development of the whole area as a whole, you know. So, and that was pretty interesting, because I've driven through Plimpton, it's like sixteen eighty house, I think, I don't know, twenty-seven or fifty-eight, you know, you see these old houses, and it's kind of neat, but, you know, when you think of Plimpton, it's like, oh, it's kind of an older town, but not really, it's actually, houses are actually quite new compared to, compared to some of the towns.
Oh, real?
So MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that's kind of our sister agency up in, up in Boston, and they do, they're in charge of a hundred and one communities, and they have a staff of like seventy-five, eighty people. So they do projections, they have a data team, they look at data, and they project out data. So since we don't do that in our office, we use their projections for Plimpton. So, the status quo scenario, they, they projected, they seem a bit high to me, but we can, we can go, we can see if there's some other data out there. They expect another two hundred housing units between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. Seems aggressive, but that's, you know, using their data and their methodologies. Between twenty-twenty and twenty-thirty, another hundred housing units. So, three hundred and thirty-seven in the next twenty years.
Not built, but need, like would be lacking.
Yes, yes, that's, that's what they see as the need, as the need in Plimpton, looking at just a lot of data, looking at past things, projections. Not only of Plimpton, but of the whole area, they do projections, they just don't, they do it on an individual town basis, so we can get these numbers, but they look at the state as a whole, and kind of, and kind of go from there. If you remember, Governor Patrick, the last governor, had the ten thousand multifamily housing units a year for the next ten years, I think he came out in twenty-ten and said that. The current governor has embraced that, so it's something that, you know, multifamily housing, it's, you know, especially in Boston, it's so expensive, but, you know, people work in Boston, but they live everywhere else, so.
Eric, do they make any type of recommendation, actually, I think you may have done it on the next screen, about what type of housing they think that we'll be needing?
Yeah, we can get into that, yep, yep, we can, we can, we can look at that for sure. Excuse me, one moment, I'm just going to grab a piece of paper and a pen.
So, you mean like housing for single individuals over sixty-five versus families?
Well, you know, based on, yeah, the stats that they have, what do they see the need as? Whether it's going to be, you know, senior housing, or starter homes, you know, what?
Right, so what type of population growth are we looking at?
Right, exactly. I mean, it looks like it's going to be, if the trend continues, it'll be growth in the senior population.
Yes.
Yes, it will be growth in that? Or yes, you understand our question?
Yes, I understand your question, and yes, it'll probably be, yes, no.
Okay.
So, yeah, looking, looking back on that, we can see the demand, the type of demand.
Yeah, it just would be interesting to see what, you know, based on their scenarios, what type of housing they think will be demanded.
I think if I'm not mistaken, I think they'll, they'll drill it down to either single-family or multifamily. I don't know if they drill it any down further than that.
Okay, that's fine.
Can anyone, oh, sorry.
Yep.
Does anybody do projections on population trends in the area? And then also by, by income, because that might give us a sense of.
Yep, yep, we can, we can, we can look at that too. Like I said, we use the Mastodot ones, it's kind of the canned ones. ME, like I said, MAPC does a lot of projections, so we might go with their projections for this, because they kind of drill down into detail. Again, like I said, the Mastodot ones, they project out what households are in, and stuff like that. MAPC will drill down even further, so. And we've worked with them in the past on a number of things, and they're, they're great to work with. So, this, this is, this is from the US Building, US Census Building Permit Survey. You know, Census has a, they track building permits. Again, the numbers might not be the exact ones, but they look at, so from two thousand and two thousand and fifteen, you can see, I only, not only have Plimpton, but a number of other towns listed. Those are towns that all border Plimpton, so they're kind of the comparison towns. So, we see that a hundred and thirteen single-family houses were permitted, and six multifamily units were permitted. Whereas Middleborough, obviously a bigger town, but they had a larger portion of multifamily units permitted during that time. We could also go to the actual, before I, you know, before we, I like to do the initial public meeting, but we can also go to the building inspector and get data from the actual town itself.
Excuse me, when you say multifamily units, does that include the group homes?
Those, those permitted, that's a good question. I would think it does, but I couldn't say for certain. I'd have to look at the US, I'd have to look at the survey. I'd have to look at the building permit survey, you know, the kind of their background data is, to see what they, what their methodology is, what they include and what they don't include. But we, I'm writing it down right now, and we can, I can look into that for you. So, you can see, most towns, it's mostly single-family. That's, you know, what the, what the demand is for. Pembroke built a good-sized unit, I was saying, I think it's called Alexa or something. I think it's owned by Route Three in Pembroke, a large apartment complex, in the mid-two thousands, so that's accounts for that.
I mean, it's interesting, because as you're saying, the demand is for the single-family homes, and I, I'm not questioning that, but.
No, I didn't say it was, I didn't say it was just single-family homes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yep.
I was just going to say, I don't know, getting back to my prior comment, I'm not sure anybody has even built a duplex, and so how would we ever know if anybody would go to one?
Yeah, I don't know if you even can build a duplex.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd have to, I've, I've, I've looked at the zoning very quickly, but I don't even know if you can, I can't remember off the top of my head, but that is why you probably wouldn't see any. But, no, this is demand, housing demand, these are units, so maybe, we're going to look into that, what type of demand. We're going to try to figure that out, if it is multifamily, single-family, what, what the demand is. Those are just straight units. This is what was permitted in the past fifteen years.
Yeah.
According to the, to the US Building Permit, US Census Building Permit Survey. So, it's the data they got, so obviously, what was permitted was a lot of single-family houses. You know, Halifax, Carver, Plimpton, generally wet areas, and we're working on this for Plimpton, I mean, for Halifax as well. And, you know, there's not a lot of, they can build with, you know, there's a lot of constraints on the lane, you know. So, this information, housing needs and demand, this is actually from the Warren Group, and this data is pretty, pretty solid. The Warren Group's around, they published the newspaper Banker and Treasman, if you've heard of that. So, we have a subscription to their service, and what they do is, this is for single-family homes, they should know. So, you can see on the left is the price, and then on the right is the number of sales. So, you can see in two thousand and one, the price was somewhere around two hundred and eighty thousand, the median sales, sales price. And then we're about thirty-five units sold in two thousand. As you can see, two thousand and three, four, five, six, it's kind of the height of the housing market. You know, prices are good, the average house is more than four hundred thousand. Were a lot sold, but you can see it tumbled down during the Great Recession, you know, seven, eight, nine, you can see the numbers dive. Again, I should note, these are just for single-family homes. In addition to the numbers, the median price dive, and the number of sales dive, because the real estate market's cold, but two thousand and twelve, thirteen, you can kind of see it rise again. It was a little bloop last year. I've looked at condominium, condominium, sales are incomplete, because there are years that there are no condominium sales in town. I can, I can make it, I can, I can include that data in here if you want. It'll look, it probably wouldn't put it in a graph form, it'd look kind of weird, because there's years missing, there's five or six years where there's no condos sold, so. Like I said, as you saw, single-family is the bulk of the town, there really are, I don't know condos in town, so to speak. There might be one or two here and there, but.
What makes a house of, what makes housing affordable? What's the definition of affordable?
We'll get to that.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We, we, we get to that. So, we also, we also look at rents. This could be kind of a question you were talking about earlier. As you can see, we look at median gross rent, again, this is from the American Community Survey. You can see Plimpton, their median rent is eight hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know how many rental units there are in Plimpton, probably not a lot. Middleborough, you can see, most of them are not only these towns, but most towns, it's like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars. Halifax, for some reason, it's seventeen hundred, I'm not really sure why. We've looked at previous years, and it seems very high, most people are renting out, Twin Lakes Complex, and those are high. I'm not really sure. We've, we've looked at it, and, you know, we reached out to the town, and they're not sure why they're that high, so. We've looked at census information, and it's always been that high, so there's no real.
How do they classify the mobile home over in Halifax?
Mobile homes? Depends, you can buy them.
What do you call it?
What's that? Halifax, I, I know, Halifax Estates.
Halifax Estates, yeah.
Yeah.
It's huge.
Yeah, I know, there's about three hundred and ninety units or something in there.
So, is that any?
No, some of them you buy, some of them you don't rent. I think most of them you repurchase.
I think most of them are owned.
Repurchased homes. You do pay like a condo fee or whatever, not a condo fee, but you pay like an upkeep fee. I think your water sewer, I went to the website, and the water sewer is included, and maybe the cable TV or something. But you have to like mow your own lawn, you buy the unit and the land, but you have to, you know, you don't own the land, you have to like rent, you rent it out. You know, your spot, your parcel, or your lot, I guess you'd say. So, those are, those would be considered homes. And for the, for the purposes of, we'll get into it in a few minutes, the subsidized housing inventory, they don't count those as affordable units. It's been a big.
Wow.
Yeah, I know, I know. There's, there's been a, there's been a, a lot of communities that, especially Carver, I think they have like a thousand units or something, home, home units. But they don't count them as affordable units. West Bridgewater's had the same issue, they have about eighty, ninety housing, eighty or ninety mobile homes. A lot of these would put these over the, over the edge, but they're not counted, so, unfortunately. Because, I mean, you don't have a ton here in Plimpton, but Halifax does, they have three hundred and eighty units, or however many are in there, and kind of a few random ones, but for the purposes of the subsidized housing inventory, they don't, they don't include those.
So, you're meaning, you mean that if somebody wanted to move into one, the government agency would not subsidize their?
No, that's why it's not on the.
So, that's why they're not affordable housing, okay.
Because if, to be on the subsidized housing inventory, it has to be subsidized. And that's usually like a senior complex, and most towns have, you know, like the Woodlands, or whatever. I mean, each, every, every town almost has a housing authority, and they have a complex for seniors, and the waitlist's like, you know, forever, you know, they put my name in now, I guess.
So, in order to be counted towards the ten percent of the housing stock, it has to also be subsidized, not just affordable, but subsidized?
It has to be subsidized by an agency.
And can we talk to Tom Coulter about that?
Sure.
I mean, that's seems unfair.
Whoever built it used FHA or whatever.
Yep.
Any government agency.
Yes.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean they're getting housing assistance, that the house was established with affordable housing funds?
Yep.
Gotcha.
And who?
Private developers can make, you know, going back to the, in my, in the town I live in, they're going to be building a forty B, and they have, it's subsidized by the government. They're also, I mean, they're selling the units, you know, probably for four hundred thousand dollars, but not the affordable ones, unless it was for, you know, a certain market price. But it does have to be backed by, it could be the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston, Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnership, there's a lot of these different agencies that can subsidize.
So, anything that's subsidized, by definition, be subsidized.
Yes. I, I think in, when we look at Plimpton, is a, it's a bit of a cranberry knoll, that was subsidized, that's a four U mix, so.
Yeah, that's twenty-five percent.
So, they have restrictions on them. And, and we actually have one that's for sale in Cranberry Knoll. And they have so long to find somebody who qualifies for a subsidized purchase, but then it can go out of.
Yeah.
Of that, if they don't find a buyer, so.
That's, yeah, that's, that's where, yeah, I think the, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. The Woodlands, you know, it, it's, it's going to count on the subsidized housing inventory until twenty forty-two, but it's not done in perpetuity. It doesn't count in perpetuity, so we'll get to that. So, the housing, sorry, so we'll talk about needs and demand.
It is.
So, this is percent of low-income households by type and size, so I'll give you a little background on this. So, the Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the US Housing and Urban Development Department, they, Comprehensive Housing Assessment Survey, it's called CHAZ, you know, government activity. So, what they do is they try to drill down in each town, they look at, again, it's using census information and that sort of thing. So, they, so they created five groups of basically households. They have elderly-related, which would be like, you know, people over sixty-five who are related. Elderly non-family, basically people who are single or living with a relative, no, not, I mean, not family. So, it could be like a relative living with a younger person or something. But for the most part, we'll call it people who live alone. Small-related family, it's like mom and dad, two kids at the most, or two parents and two kids. Large-related is more than two parents and two kids. Other is other. It could be young people living alone, it could be a group of young people living alone, basically unrelated people living together. So, percent of low-income households, so, of all the households, looking at that, thirty-three percent of the elderly-related households in town are low-income households. Whereas, you can see the elderly have the highest, so of all the elderly, non-family, basically elderly, younger people, seventy-nine percent of them have low income, or are considered low income. Going back to your definition, low income is, is area median income. It's having, the area median income, it's eighty percent of the area median income, which more, I'll give the exact number for you.
So, Eric, these are just income levels?
Yes.
Not that they're living in affordable homes, these are.
These are just straight, these are just straight.
Okay.
I don't know where these people are living, no.
Well, not in affordable homes, not in Plimpton.
Probably not, no.
Sad.
I think a little bit, me, three. I have a guest bedroom.
Okay, I have, I have, I have the actual definition, so. Elderly households, one or two people with either or both age sixty-two or over. Elderly non-family is, I guess, also a single person.
I'm sorry, you said sixty-two or older?
One or two people with either both, with either or both sixty-two or older, at least one person's going to be sixty-two.
God, sixty-two is elderly now?
I know.
Holy cow.
According to HUD.
Is there someone called super elderly now?
No. Well, they have, since the last census, they have increased the age, used to be the seventy-five plus, they just moved to the, now it's seventy-five, eighty-four, eighty-five plus.
Wow.
They got the older category. But that just shows the, you know, the imagination, people living longer. Small-related households, two persons, neither of whom are sixty-two or over, three or four people, so kind of a, two parents, two kids. Large-related, five people or more, so it could be three adults, you know, two kids, three adults, whatever. All other households are single people, under the age of sixty-two, and people who are not related, living together, roommates, that sort of thing.
So, even committed couples who just aren't married would be counted as other rather than as family?
Yes, because they're not related. That's another, another, you'll see the non-family households, people living together, they don't get married. Again, it's just a social dynamic that you've seen change, that has changed over time, so.
And you said that low income is earning eighty percent or less of the area median income?
Yes, we'll get, we'll get, we'll zoom down on that a little more. So, we're looking at affordability now, affordability. So, so we're looking at cost burdened households by tenure. Tenure either is for this, own or rent, do you own a house or do you rent?
Okay.
You pay rent. That's what we're talking, by tenure, so again, from the American Community Survey. So, what's it mean to be cost-burdened? Cost-burdened means you pay more than thirty percent of your income for housing-related expenses. So, that counts as rent, mortgage, anything that, taxes, insurance. You spend more than thirty percent of your income towards your home, you're considered to be cost-burdened.
And is that what makes you eligible to live in affordable housing?
No, no. No, we'll get to what, where you live in affordable housing. So, so this is just showing you that renters are more likely to be cost-burdened, probably why, you know, most likely why they rent. But Plimpton, for their households, their owner-occupied households, only twenty-six percent, which is actually, as you can see, a small number, are considered cost-burdened.
It's because we're all farts who paying off our mortgage.
Yeah, living your life forever.
Yeah, which is, you know, Plimpton is an older town, so you have people who've been here longer, they're established, they've paid down a lot of their mortgage. You know, they don't have as many expenses as younger people who are starting out. As you can see, it goes, you know, but a lot of, the few renters there are, they seem to be cost-burdened, most of them are cost-burdened in Plimpton. As you can see, uh, it goes, you know, but a lot of, the few renters there are, they seem to be cost burdened, most of them are cost burdened in Plumpton. But Plumpton and Pembroke, lower, low number of, uh, cost burdened households, same thing with Middleborough. Carver, Halifax, they have more cost burdened households. Again, this comes from the American Community Survey. Why Halifax has forty-one percent, I, I don't know.
Could that be because so many own their, um, mobile homes and so they're?
It could be, yes. It could be, it could be, yeah. There's definitely, uh, you know, the three hundred, uh, like you said, Carver also has a number, a fair number of, uh, mobile homes. I think they have more than a thousand, um, in, in Carver, so that would, that would, it's probably a good, uh, good estimation.
Well, they've got much lower median incomes than we do too, which Eric will show, which is probably part of the reason why they're cost burdened.
The, the numbers, I can recite some of them off my head, like Middleborough's median household income is seventy-six thousand five hundred, whereas Plumpton's is ninety thousand four hundred, so. Compared to the surrounding towns, Plumpton has a higher level of income. So going back, this is the local subsidized housing inventories. This is where you wanna get to the ten percent. So you can see Halifax has just point nine percent. You can see Plumpton in the middle there, four point nine percent.
Not a bad spot.
Not a bad spot, not a bad spot. Uh, Middleborough, five point seven, Pembroke, nine point six. They're gonna be updating these. This is from December twenty fourteen. I spoke to somebody with the state. They'll be updating them the next month or so. We should have new numbers, although I expect them to, you know, vary just lately, so. So you're doing, you're doing pretty good. You're doing pretty good. Could be better, uh, but not, not too bad, about five percent of the houses.
So we would just have to just double the number of households.
So you have fifty-one.
That are affordable to meet the state minimum.
Yep. You have fifty-one households, fifty-one housing units now. If you could double that to a hundred and two, then you'd be good.
Uh-huh. Wait, you, you said we have fifty-one?
Yeah, we'll get to the list, yeah. Fifty-one, yeah.
Watch for the graph.
Okay, it's just that I thought you said we had twelve hundred households.
Yeah, you have about a thousand.
Thousand, thousand six.
As of the twenty-ten census. That's what they use, the decennial census to determine the number of households. So some of the key findings, I have additional data in my little notes here, so we can, we can roll down. Kind of going over what we just talked about, slight population increase is projected in the coming years, you know, from the mask, we can use other projections. Households will continue to increase, though the household, the size of households will continue, continue to decrease due to the variety of societal factors. Uh, people not having as many kids, um, people living alone is more common. So there's, there's a variety, people living older or living spouses, that sort of thing. Percentage of the eight population age sixty-five and over doubled in Plumpton from two thousand to two thousand and ten. And from six and a half percent of the population in two thousand to thirteen and a half in two thousand and ten, I expect that to increase even further by twenty-twenty. Enrollment at the Denet Elementary School has declined in recent years. We can also look at the enrollment at, at Silver Lake. Kinda gets, kinda gets foggy there because you got other towns involved and some towns are growing and, you know, faster than others, so. Plumpton's level of income when compared to its neighbors, uh, more than forty-two percent of the households earn more than a hundred thousand dollars annually.
Yeah, just one question.
Sure.
It says the percentage of the population age sixty-five and over doubled in, from two thousand, it's, what's the six and a half percent?
That was the pop- the, the population, uh, the percent of the population that was sixty-five and over in two thousand. So six and a half percent of the population in the year two thousand was sixty-five and over.
Now it's thirteen and a half?
Now it's thirteen and a half.
Of the three thousand population, right?
Twenty-eight, twenty. That's the number. That's, they use, we're using twenty-ten numbers, so.
So what is that roughly?
Uh, I can get it for you right there.
Just seeing if it's quiz with the council and agent members.
Sure, yeah. Um, I should note that we'll include, we can talk about how you want this presented. We can do it with tables like this, or we can do graphs. Some people like to, some people don't wanna get dogged down on tables, some people want the actual numbers in front of them. Or we can do an appendix or whatever you want.
I'm not allowed back in my house without the tables and the actual numbers.
So population, group by age, okay. So sixty-five and over in two thousand?
Uh, two thousand and ten would be that.
Okay. Um, so in two, uh, I'll just give you two thousand, so in two thousand, the number of people who are sixty-five and over, um, was a hundred and seventy-three.
Okay.
So the number of people in two thousand and ten who were sixty-five and older, it was three hundred and eighty-three.
Is that different? Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't listen.
But you know what, cause I think they start to count folks either at sixty or sixty-two.
Maybe fifty-five too.
Sixty-two?
Okay.
Sixty-five?
I bet it is fifty-five.
I know for sure sixty-two.
That's why I didn't. Got it. So two thousand, the number was one seventy-three.
Yeah, so if you go to sixty or sixty-two.
It would be, it would be, yeah.
Okay. So it was, um, again, this comes from the US Census Bureau. I know towns do their own local census, you know, I fill out my census and, uh, again, we can use whatever numbers, uh, you're most comfortable with. The Department of Housing and Community Development, they're usually, you know, as long as the town, the plan is produced with the town and by the town, they're pretty much okay with it. Although census, again, just starting this out, uh, for Plumpton, we're just, I'm just using census numbers, but we can supplant that or, uh, do whatever you want with that. Like I said, I, I have this breakdown here in this table, um, and we can put that as, you know, when we develop the report, we can, you can tell me how you like it. We can do an appendix, we can do a draft, either or.
I, I have another question.
Sure.
Which is more about, since we're trying to look into the future and plan for the future.
Mm-hmm.
You know, past performance is no indication of future, you know. Um, and I think there's a lot going on that would make it really hard to project because on the one hand, you know, I hear a lot that younger people are headed more towards the city now, they're into the urban environment, but on the other hand, if we made it more affordable to move here, would young families start to live here?
Sure.
I don't know that the town necessarily feels comfortable, that we're all gonna just grow old and die off and leave empty houses. Um, so, you know, and also stock may increase because we have such an aging population. It seems like people are gonna be moving or passing away unfortunately.
Yep.
So, um, is there any way we can get the handle on a good, solid projection, five years out, ten years out, what the picture's gonna look like in terms of population?
We, we can, like I said, we just use the mass dot popul- uh, projections, we, there's, there's other projections. There is the UMass Donahue Institute, uh, does projections, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council does projections. I will look into those projections. Those projections get into, uh, to age, you know, the age, so it's like, oh, five years from now, we expect seventeen percent of the population to be sixty-five and older. We can drill down a little further with those projections, uh, and they go out to, I think M P C's is twenty thirty, something like UMass Donahue Institute. So we'll look at those, we can grab those projections and I can share that data with you and say, okay, this is, this is what we got. Other than those two sources, I don't really know of any, any other, um, projections that are used, that are commonly used. We do have, um, there's another, there is another one, um, Ezri, um, we have a GIS person at our work and we use Ezri. I don't know if anyone's heard of Ezri. It's a GIS company that's kind of world renowned, uh, and we have a, uh, a program called Business Analyst. We've done market analysis with that, but they also project five years out as to, uh, population trends and that sort of thing, uh, so we can look at that as well. I know some plans do look at, uh, do use Ezri projections. Again, a projection, it's not, it's, they're projections, you know, it's, it's nothing set in stone. Um, and we can, we can compare all these projections and see what, you know, you guys live in Plumpton, you know, what, what do you think? I don't know. I don't, not here all the time, I don't know, you know, I'm not, you know, going to the gas station and just knowing the town, who's moving in, who's moving out, you know, the, uh, the people you're seeing on a day-to-day basis.
Can we, uh, can we take the schematic of the town and look at where development is most likely to happen?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Because that almost would tell us what kind of houses are gonna be.
When you say where it's most likely to happen, do you mean in terms of the desirability of parcels or do you mean
Well, first of all.
projecting based on demographics and things?
More to know what's unbuildable.
What's, what land is available?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then to say, okay, well, it's gonna be, if it's the field on, uh, fifty-eight, I just gotta feel that it's gonna be a different housing sales price.
Yes.
Something like over on Ring Road.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be interesting to see where.
Sure, and we, we can, we, you know, through our GIS, uh, personnel, we can look at, we can lay down all these layers. Oh, this is what, I just can't build on that. Oh, this is a floodlot, can't build on that. Oh, this is, you know, different habitats, so you don't wanna build on that. It's kind of almost like a mini type of a build-out.
Yeah.
It's gonna get a little, it's getting a little dicey. I'm gonna go back and he's gonna be like, oh.
Our two thousand build-out, I know. Yeah, I mean, I thought it was really a good illustration of what, why we needed really good zoning bylaws.
We can look at that. It's gonna be based on your current zoning, so we could propose something else and those numbers will get
Right.
kind of out of whack, but
Right.
based on what your current zoning is, you know, your sixty thousand square foot parcels and that sort of thing, um, you know, you can have twenty, you know, and max build-out, you can have another hundred and fifty ounces or whatever, I'm just making up a number.
The bylaw committee need that information too, I think.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And maybe Old Colony Planning Council, when, as we're working through this, will come up with some suggested bylaws for us to look at for different types of scenarios that we'd like to look into.
And that's, that's kind of where it goes. You know, this is kind of the starting process and then we can, you know, once this is done, it's like, okay, let's implement all these strategies, you know, working together. We have, the town's not paying for this, you know, uh, you know, from your coffers, um, it is not fair on that. We use district local technical assistance. We get on an annual basis, um, we get a couple hundred thousand dollars and then we ask towns, what kind of projects would you like to do? Christine said, could you do a housing production? So this is what, why we're here, so.
This is great.
So next year, we always look for the legislature to give us more funding, so next year, hey, we'd like to do one of those bylaws, great, let's work on it again, so. So that's where folks like Tom Coulter has, have been, uh, big champions of what we call D L T A, our District Local Technical Assistance Fund, so. So that is definitely, definitely helpful.
Definitely, it just seems that, I don't know, knowing whether there's gonna be a high demand for families to move in.
Mm-hmm.
Like if, if they could come, would they?
Yeah.
I kind of get the feeling that, yeah, cause just casually, I mean, I don't get out much anymore, cause I work at home, but, um, you know, just different people I bumped into have said, oh, Plumpton, we're looking, and they're young families, and they said, we just can't afford it, so.
Uh, yeah, I.
I mean, they're coming, you look at the houses that are being built and they're not getting smaller and they're not getting cheaper.
No, no.
No, I, I have a young family, I have two kids, like some three.
Come move in.
I just bought a house.
Volunteer for a board.
I already volunteered for a board. I just bought a house this past summer, the second house we bought in Midway, cause we liked the town and we liked the school, the schools. And my wife's a teacher in a different town, so she, I kind of let her decide on that, but, um, so, no, we're, we're good where we are. I served on two boards in my town, so in addition to doing, oh, this, this is, uh, this is work, but I enjoy it, that's, that's why I do it. But, yeah, I mean, you know, if we were looking down here, Plumpton, sure, um, you know, you look at, first thing you look at in any field, family, most of the schools, you know, you got Silver Lake, you got Denet Elementary, small town, what's not to like?
Right, small student.
Small student.
Teacher, yeah.
You look in that mass department of elementary, secondary education, they have the breakdown of how many kids in first grade, going back fifteen years, you know, so you can see it's, you know, there's twenty-two kids in first grade or print, or kindergarten or whatever it is, so, um, you know, my daughter's in the, in the kindergarten with nineteen kids. And there's a teacher and a parent professional in the class, so that's, that's great, you know. Uh, you know, I went to school in Brockton, it was like, you know, thirty-five kids, you know, it's like a free-for-all. So, um, yeah, so just, uh, there's, there's a lot to look at, there's a lot to like about, uh, lots to like about, uh, Plumpton. You know, some of the, we'll get into some of the, uh, some of the drawbacks of the town is that, you know, there's not a lot to do here, you know. Which is also is some of its appeal, you know, that's why people come here is because.
Well, yeah, it depends.
Depends on what you're looking for.
Are you single? Looking for nightlife or?
That's not it, but.
Right.
You've got Halifax up the street and you've got Walmart and Stop and Shops, it's not like you have to drive an hour to get to the supermarket.
True.
That's why the, the income's going up, I believe.
Yep. Yep, people, people like the rural.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, yeah, I think they do too, but if, I think if we had some starter homes that were affordable, that we would get new families here. And it's a balance because we need new families to support the school. Yeah, and, and old families, people that have been here forever to be able to stay in Plumpton.
That's.
And to turn the housing stock over.
Need is that people, you know, if you have a, you know, your kid graduated Silver Lake, not gonna live in Plumpton, can't afford it, there's nowhere to live, so they move elsewhere. You know, and maybe they would like to live in Plumpton, but they just can't afford it, cause all the houses are six hundred thousand dollars or, you know, and there's no place to rent. So it's like, oh, I have to go, even if I didn't want to, you know, to have a family, it's, again, there's really no place, you know, maybe I'll move to Middleborough, it's bigger, bigger stock. You know, but I like Plumpton, so, same thing with folks who, you know, paid off their house and, you know, you're living on, uh, you're living on, uh, you know, the retirement and I don't need this five hundred thousand dollar house anymore, I want something smaller, but there isn't anything smaller, so, you know, they go somewhere else.
Right.
Right. Yeah, and it just seems like if the average household size is going down, then an existing house that's large, that supported a larger family, has the septic infrastructure to support the same number of people, but it's more households.
Yeah, yeah, they, they go by, you know, a septic, uh, a septic system now and they go by the number of bedrooms, so, I mean, they don't go by the number of people. It's like, oh, that's interesting, or the number of bathrooms, so it's just like the number of people, it's kind of, uh, the, the way they do it, so, you know, you could have a three thousand square foot house, but two people live there. You could have, you know, these accessory dwelling units on site, or you could have additional people living there, you know. Yeah, probably a lot of these large houses, it's just, you know, mom and dad and a kid, you know, two parents and a kid, you know, so. But, you know, they have the septic system for, you know, a four bedroom, a four bathroom house or four bedroom house, you know, so. So we talked about, uh, housing stock, single family. Housing stock is relatively new despite the town's, uh, long history. Seems to be of order, it, I can say, uh, demand for, uh, housing. Uh, home prices have rebounded since the, the Great Recession, um, you know, I don't know if they're back. They seem to be not all the way back, um, but in Plumpton, I know, I was just in the housing market last year, they, they seem to be back. Cause I bought my house, fortunately, the first time in two thousand and seven, right, when it was on the downswing. And we sold it for more than we bought it for, so we seem to make up, uh, that for a while they were gonna be there forever, so. But, uh, they seem to have rebounded, uh, quite nicely. Sizable number of low income folks, especially among the elderly population, which is true for pretty much any town. You know, folks living, uh, on social security, on, uh, the retirement, you know, folks are also living a lot longer than they used to. You saw the number of people in town is a hundred and, what's it, a hundred and sixty-three in two thousand, people over sixty-five now, almost four hundred. So that, it's another societal phenomenon, so. Again, not exclusive to Plumpton, but all over the place. I could show you every town in Massachusetts. Questions?
Oh, none.
Answer the questions? Yeah, no, I have some, I have some additional things to go through. To inform the next part of our work, we wanna hear from you, um, about housing goals, barriers, opportunities. I have a general idea of what the, you know, barriers are in town, um, but your goals, you know, I, I could probably come up with a general idea of what they are. But, um, you know, I wanna, that's where I'm here with you guys to give me the feedback. I mean, I could develop this plan kind of in a, in a silo and give it to you and it'd probably be seventy-five percent all right, but, you know, we're, we want it to be your plan, not my plan. Um, I'm kind of just the instrument for, I mean, how do you guys want this?
So again, uh, I'll bring you forward. Did you have a question?
The, um, no, no question, yep. I'm here as long as you want, so.
Can I ask, um, are you, are you gonna ask something?
Or are you gathering, are you gathering your questions?
I'm gathering steam.
So several, well, I don't even really recall how long ago, but at a town meeting, we spoke about, um, and I thought this was kind of how this started to develop. Older folks that, um, are financially burdened in some way, but have their home here. In a way of qualifying that to benefit them, but also to meet this affordable housing guideline.
Okay.
So there, uh, so I, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were talking about somehow giving them a financial benefit, but also their dwelling and their finances would qualify. Well, this only was.
Yeah, this was, Dale's mentioned it a couple times, that you can basically buy the elderly people's home and subsidize their liv- Yeah, this was, Dale's mentioned it a couple times, that you can basically buy the elderly people's home and subsidize their living there, but now, now that housing unit becomes
Part of the town.
Okay, I, I didn't mean that. I meant for them to be able, so, I thought when we spoke about it many months ago, that it was that they would keep it, but there was somehow a way to qualify it with their finances under the affordable housing. I, I, either I missed a part of the conversation, which is quite possible.
It's the same, yeah, it has to become subsidized somehow.
Yeah, and, and you know, what they were talking about is that the town, through like a housing trust or something like that, would, would, would raise funds. Do you have the C P A in the town?
We did.
Okay, so some of it can go to affordable housing, so, housing, do you have a housing trust? I don't think so.
No.
So, you could create a housing trust, and what you could do is buy houses, you know, from these folks, you know, and then they become subsidized, and the town, the housing trust would own the house, and then when those people.
Now, are there towns that do that?
Oh, yeah.
Such as, I mean, do you have?
Uh, I don't have a list off the top of my head, but it's pretty.
But you could share.
Oh, sure, yep, yep, there's, there's, you know, I, I know Lexington, Concord, some of those types of towns have housing trusts. Expensive towns, but it's just not expensive towns. There are other towns that do it. But, you know, you would think, you know, just using Lexington, Concord as an example, although they have, you know, high incomes, both of them have more than ten percent affordable housing, same thing with Bedford, so, they take it. They, they have a lot of people working on it, and I mean, they have lots of staff too, but, but it's just not for those types of towns. The housing trust, I can get you a list. Off the top of my head, I don't have any towns per se, but I can get you a list of towns with housing trusts.
It'd be interesting to know how they make a decision on what houses they purchase. How they get in the queue.
And it, a total purchase, that's very expensive, whereas something along the lines of, I guess unless the person's willing to sell very low in order to get the relief on the property taxes. But, you know, I, I can't imagine that Plinton would ever be able to pull together enough money to buy more than one or two homes.
I assume you would go to some sort of state-financed institution, that you, you would pass it off like a mortgage.
Yeah, they, they, you know, using the housing, developing the housing trust, you know, to buy houses, the price, the price of houses in Plinton is not, you know, we, I don't know, say their average price is three hundred and eighty thousand, you're not gonna buy a bunch of single-family houses in Plinton. That's probably not the best way to spend that money, to be honest with you. It might be saying, hey, as part of this, what we're gonna get into, I didn't touch on it tonight, is looking at areas in town that are publicly owned land, okay, say we own this area that, eh, we're not sure what, we're gonna build a senior center there, but now, I don't know, we're just sitting there. Let's use that, partner with housing solutions for Southeastern Mass, used to be Social Housing, partner with one of those agencies, get a developer in there, and then create another Woodlands-type project. And there you got forty units affordable, and you can boost it up to your ten percent. You know, that would probably be the best way to kind of go with that, instead of buying single-family houses out there.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't mean to be negative, but this has been on my mind for about twenty years, so. I, and I have just a teeny bit of knowledge of the sociology of elderly people because of a project I worked on. But it just seems to me that those, that style is, first of all, not gonna necessarily go over very well with Plinton.
The style?
The style, the woodland style approach.
Okay, no.
It doesn't really keep in character with the town. It still means that elderly residents have to leave a home that they may have been in for twenty, or thirty, or forty, or fifty years.
Yep.
And it, um, doesn't seem healthy to sort of ghettoize, pardon the expression, but to, to clump old people together, when all the research shows that, you know, cross-age friendships and relationships are what keep people thriving and keep a community thriving.
Yep.
I don't think, I, I've never heard any negativity about Woodlands, and if we would have had another woodland that was off, so you can't see it, like they are, I don't think people would, uh. What we would need is a, a, a strong community center to offset the fact, because that's where people go. I mean, you go to almost any of the places in Florida that have fifty-five and over, and big community centers is the heart of it, all these different.
Easily accessible places.
Mm-hmm.
I know for my, after this term, I won't be able to live here. We'll have to sell out, and we'll have to move, because there's no place in Plinton we can go.
Well, we gotta change that.
I could buy my house.
We could have housing for past selectmen.
The house, the home for past.
Town Republican.
Way back.
Yep.
And so, you know, he's got this lane and along either side of the lane are other people's residences. But it's just a basic sort of pork chop lot.
Yep.
You know? Uh, he wanted to look into getting a separate structure built for his, um, family member.
Mm-hmm.
And we had no ability at that time to allow that unless he wanted to make this a subdivision and then have all, have all requirements for the fifty-two foot wide road waived and all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But once we did that, we were gonna open up all of those side lots to potential development and roads and all of that.
Yep.
And we just thought that this was just gonna be way too dramatic, so we didn't waive all those rights. And he was understandably extremely frustrated.
Sure.
Um, and it would've been a perfect solution for that family and it would've been a perfect solution for us as a town if we had been able to say, well, you know, this is an affordable housing option.
Hmm.
And as long as that in-law apartment gets rented for a certain percentage of, you know, it stays affordable in perpetuity, we will gladly, you know, waive the zoning by law, but you have to do it as a forty B application, you know? And, uh, and I just, it's like, I, I think the most precious thing to Plimpton is its ability to maintain its judgment on case by case, and I understand that that can get very problematic. And I'm not saying I want special case treatment, but I also don't wanna end up saying, well, we're gonna tweak our by law just this little bit to let this one good thing happen and then see the abuse that happens.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's where, you know, that's where it's a separate whole study from this. We can, we can float these ideas and strategies in the goals and implementation strategies. And, you know, D H E D is expecting, not expecting everything to become a reality, but it's to bring the topic out that, hey, you're actually looking at it, great. And that's when you can work on it as like a separate project, as flushing out these ideas and say, hey, you know, that sounds like it opened the floodgates to everybody, let's tweak it like this. You know, I think, uh, you know, in Medway where I live, the accessory dwelling unit has to be in, uh, lived in by relatives.
Yeah, Citewood has that too, and it's up to like a seven hundred and fifty square foot.
Yep.
Always, so even if they sell it?
Even if they sell it, say they, I'm done, your relative passes away or whatever, you sell it to a new person, yeah. Or it's just a.
Although I don't, I don't think it's really all that problematic to say somebody else who's, who qualifies.
That's up to the town, you know, 'cause they don't wanna, you know, some towns are like, oh, rental property and, you know, renting out to, you know, transients or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to the individual town, but, you know, in Medway, we had, I think it was eight hundred square feet. The zoning board, we'd let them go to like nine fifty, because they showed us a drawing and it was done by an architect and all sorts of stuff. And you can't see it from the road, it's gonna be part of the house, and there's like a million different, you know, you can add on as much stuff as, you know, as many, you know, planning board, you can add on as much as you want, uh, to tailor it to your needs. I mean, the more specific you make it, the more, uh, um, you know, the more limiting it is.
Mm-hmm.
But the more maybe it's done in the taste, that's, that's, uh, that's better for the town, you know?
And for people to sell it, I mean, if it's too restricted, then.
Right.
That's the other thing is that.
It's going to be sold to the lowest bidder, which.
Is it necessarily the best, yeah?
Yeah.
So when the smiths leave that dwelling with the two.
Yep.
That property with the two and the Joneses buy it.
Right.
You'd, you'd like the Joneses to buy it for the market value, but if that doesn't work out and the smiths lose it.
Right.
Then it goes into a whole different category.
Right.
It'll still need the family that comes in to maintain both of those buildings, but.
Yep.
It could be at a drastically different price and really different from what you're, if it's too restrictive, I mean.
Right.
You know, the.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
You may, you're probably not gonna get the money back on it. You know, uh, the people who build it probably aren't gonna get that money back on it, 'cause those are.
Yeah.
You know, few and far between, it's a special person that's looking for that type of house, uh, you know, any type of in-law house, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a special thing, so.
Well, and additionally, it only counts if it's subsidized.
That's the other thing.
Right, it doesn't even count in our inventory.
Yeah.
So there'd be no point in doing this, right?
Yeah, and so that, that part just doesn't make any sense at all.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't count in your inventory, it wouldn't count in inventory, 'cause it's not gonna be subsidized, not that I know of anyway, I mean, I can, I can check.
But if you're renting it at the value of the, whatever the section, I don't know if this is, if this is an antiquated term, but whatever the section eight value is.
Yeah, yep, yep. Yep.
Then that is, that does not count as a forty B?
That's.
Or as affordable housing, I should say, not forty B, but.
That, that's, that's, that's up to the town, if you do have this, you don't have it right now, but if you do have an accessory dwelling unit, um, do you want it to be open up to the general public or do you want it to be restricted to a person who's related to the person?
So if it's a person restricted, can you still manage the cost of the rental so that it falls in that? No?
Because if it, if it's, if it's, I build a accessory dwelling unit on my, or like an in-law apartment on my property and my mother-in-law lives there, I'm not gonna charge her rent, you know?
Yep, yep, yep. Uh. But if you're not charging her rent, then that means you're making it affordable for her.
Uh, yeah, but it's not being subsidized by anybody, it's being subsidized by me, it's not being subsidized by a federal agency. So the, the goal of the Housing Production Plan is to get to the ten percent, but it's also to, it's, that's not the only goal. It's to make a variety, it's, it's to make this, it's called the Housing Production Plan, to, a variety of different housing options for folks in the town. You know, the ten percent's the goal, but these accessory dwelling unit might be an idea you might wanna look at, because it, it would provide for those people. You, you saw, uh, the planning board, they said, don't, sorry, I can't do it, but if you had an accessory dwelling unit by law, you'd say, well, yeah, you can, under this accessory dwelling unit by law, we'll account towards our forty, you know, our subsidized housing inventory, no, but.
But, but see, then that begins to encourage to me, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but my fear has always been that, okay, we do that, but then it just encourages sort of more and more and more town growth, and when you get beyond a certain number of residents in the town, then it's no longer Plimpton. And so that I would want to say, well, if there's a need for the lowing, the affordable housing and we have this other need, can we work together to find a way to make that possible so that the individuals who are already committed to the town and in-town and have their roots get what they need and the town also is, um, on record is meeting the affordable housing need?
I, I totally understand, it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard balance, it's a hard balance, it's trying to meet this ten percent and keeping the, you know, the character of the town. Um, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of moving parts, there's no, I don't have an easy answer for you, I wish I did.
Yeah.
I, I would be, uh, in demand.
I guess, so I guess the question is, is that overall, with a big broad brush stroke, can you say, yeah, we'll tend, it tends to be flexible enough and there are, there are enough solutions that, that are out there that as long as you kinda take your time and focus on it, you, you'll be able to tweak that, or are your, is your message for us, like, well, maybe your hopes for this plan are a little too ambitious? And really, the reality is that you're not, you know, we're not as, in as much control of this as it might seem.
No, I think you're, I think you're, you're in control of it, this other inclusionary zoning, you have that, um, you know, work in, you know, identifying, uh, parts, pieces of town-owned land to make, uh, to be affordable, I don't know if you have any town-owned land, we'll get into that.
We do, we have quite a bit of town-owned land.
Town-owned land that you'd be willing to make, I mean, again, a forty B, if you were in a, say, you come up with a developer and you're using this program, the local initiative program, and so we'll work with a developer to build it for you, uh, usually people have a negative connotation.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, the developer's coming in, they're gonna do whatever. Using the local initiative program, another program by the state, you work with a developer to kinda tailor the development to look like it's in concert with Plimpton, you know, it might not be sixty thousand square feet, but maybe it's like twenty thousand square feet or something. And not all the units have to be affordable, so you can have, you know, maybe it's a little denser, again, you're getting away from your, your sixty thousand square feet, but sixty thousand square feet of affordable housing doesn't really jive too much.
Right, so what we don't have is something that allows, like, cluster building.
That isn't.
And that may, that may be something to, to look at, which, you know, preserves open space, but puts.
The homes closer together.
Yeah, and, and the, my sample size was low and it was skewed, but when that came up, when I was on planning board, I think we're gonna, I mean, it's gonna take a lot of explanation bef, to help people chill out so they can see what it might look like. Because they have a bad reputation from the first gen, generation.
It'll be much worse, right.
So.
I think that would fit, cluster zoning, huh?
Cluster zoning is a, is a, is a popular, you know, you preserve open space, um, the houses are pretty, are densely together, which is going with, you know, smart growth and all, all of that, um. But, yeah, it's, it's a balance that you're gonna have to make, the town, you know, as part of this, I can tell you, one of the recommendations we'll include on it, include as part of the plan, or that I would advocate for you to include in part of the plan, is an ongoing education, um, about affordable housing. People think affordable housing, they're just thinking, the worst, you know, you probably think the worst thing in your mind, and that's what they think of affordable housing. And it's not, affordable housing is not low-income housing, affordable housing is, it's affordable to people who are making less than, uh, eighty percent of the area needing income. So it, it, using my Medway example, is, you know, the house will be priced at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not like they're giving it away for nothing.
Right.
Again, they can't sell it for more than that, they have to, you know, there's deed restrictions on, on the property and whatnot.
So it's about a seventy-six thousand dollar household income that would be the eighty percent?
In Medway, uh, Medway, I'm sorry, in Plimpton, it's, uh, ninety, ninety-six hundred.
Ninety-two or something.
Wait, wait.
Ninety-two is the median, so be eighty percent of that.
Yeah, eighty percent of that would be around.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Seventies, okay, and then thirty percent of the seventy-six, so a third of that would be twenty-five thousand and change would be housing expenses for those people.
Yeah, yep, yep, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, if you, if you, yeah, you try to go, you try to keep it under thirty percent, you know, I mean, that's a general thing. I think when I was getting my mortgage, I have to think back, they, back in the wild west days, they didn't care, but, you know, that, that's a, you know, that's a typical thing, is you wanna keep, like, you know, you wanna pay more than a third, you know, so that's where that comes in, a third of your, uh, of your income towards housing.
Right.
You know, because it's, you know, it's too much and you won't be able to make a mortgage, um, but still, it's, you know, the, you know, when you apply for a mortgage, you know, and you have to still do your due diligence, 'cause it's like, they don't look at any of the other expenses, they just look at your income and how much it helps you run. It's like, you might have to eat noodles for the rest of your life, but, you know, that's.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, we were, personally, like, two and a half times our household salary, and I was like, what?
Yeah, I did the thing.
No, we can't afford that.
Yeah, exactly, but, you know, those are the wild, you know, I think it's still kinda like that, to be honest with you, that, you know, it's like, oh, just throw us a number. Why am I throwing you a number, you throw me a number, but, uh, it's still people that do their due diligence, 'cause, you know, you look at it, it's like, oh my god, I guess I could pay it if I drove a thirty-year-old car and ate noodles, but.
But I, I think to be able to explain to people, like, so this is what affordability would mean.
Yep.
Some, a family making seventy-six thousand dollars a year, which would look like, you know, maybe a family.
Or less, or less.
That has, or less, but, um, it's like a family where the, there's one breadwinner who's a teacher. And their house costs X, and I think that would help people see what.
What this is, what this is, right.
That's not really, um.
That, that's a common way, I know, that to advertise it is, you know, affordable housing is people who work in the town, some of them can't, some of them can't live in the town. You know, so the teacher, the fireman, the policeman, you know, they'd ideally might like to live in the town, but they can't afford to, 'cause they don't make enough.
Well, that's, that's our situation, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, um, that's, that's definitely a way to approach it, you know, is that, you know, the people who, you know, are gonna buy these and people who are looking to do it are people who work for the town, who work in the town, the guy who runs the restaurant, or the, the.
The one restaurant.
Diner down the street or whatever it is on the restaurant, the guy owns the gas station, whatever, but that's a way to, that's a way to appeal, you know, it's a way to make this, to tell the story about affordable housing, and that's something that, you know, we can work with and we can break it down, like, you know, because it is, it can be, as you saw tonight, you know, you folks have an interest in it, that's why you're here, and it can be, you know, rather complex, but to break it down into simpler terms, which is, uh, which can be done, and it just takes some time.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the, the other process and what is the timeframe?
Yeah.
You know, you're going to help prepare a report.
Yes.
Um, working with this committee and its advisor.
Are you on the committee?
Um, no, actually.
You may have been drafted.
Well, I was drafted and, and Christine knows the art of sucking me in, oh, no commitment, just come as an advisor.
Um, so you, so you, you do that work and then they go out to the public and, and try to see what the public wants for changes?
Yeah, so, yeah, so what, what we did was, we've kinda just, this presentation tonight was just kind of a primer, just to get your, to, 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 uh, to, to inform you of what we're looking at, you know, some of the basic stuff, you know, I have this more formal notes and slash type of report going on here, but this is not all the information that I have, this is, like, just a primer, just to, you know, get us talking, explain what we're looking at, um, so the next steps is, we'll go, I'll go back after tonight, the notes you talk about, you know, different projections and stuff like that, I'll just kinda, uh, try to re, try to, uh, try to find additional data, but the Housing Production Plan in, it's really three parts. It's like the demographic and the housing stock type stuff, a lot of the data we talked about tonight, so that's kinda one part. The second part is identifying barriers, um, developmental constraints, why are we having problems? So you kinda get of where we are right now, this is, this is Plimpton, this is what we are, this is the problems that we're having, and then the third part is to develop strategies and actions to kinda overcome those problems, or try to, uh, whatever problems that might be, maybe the problem's zoning, you know, we've, it seems to be, that might be an issue, is to develop solutions for that, um, you know, is it, is it, uh, you know, within this committee, if this committee, um, you know, they can have as many public meetings as you want, I can come to as many as you want, um, as long as you guys don't have me down here once a week for like a year or something, so we don't have to, we don't have to charge you out of pocket, um, but, um, you know, it's, it's you folks, you know, you can meet without me, you can meet with me, I'm pretty accessible, except Wednesday nights, um, I can come down here as much as you like, uh, to talk about this, I like talking about it, um. So once you develop the action, those strategies, you know, you know, we could do a survey, Christine, I don't know if you were here at that time, um, to get the public input, since you have, usually you have a hard time, people come into meetings and stuff, um, is we can, we can create a survey and we can advertise it, um, we've done a lot of surveys, um, at our office. You could do it online, Survey Monkey we have, we can develop a survey, you know, run it by you guys, see what you think, we can post it online here in the town, we could also do hard copies at, you know, the senior center, which I think is here, right?
Sort of, such as it is.
You could do it at the library, hard copies, we did a economic development, we did a economic development study, or a market study in Bridgewater, we got six hundred responses.
Wow.
Um, we did one in Dexbury and we got three hundred and fifty responses, so it's not scientific in by any nature, I shouldn't mention that, that would be cost prohibitive, at least to, you know, calling people, but, uh, just using the Survey Monkey, you've had some success using it, you know, hard copies and electronic copies, so, you know, you could link it to the town website, you know, we could go through it, keep it live for a couple of weeks, uh, you know, what do people wanna see, that's a way to get public input, um, you know, I know coming to meetings and stuff, so that, that's, that's a way, but, you know, so we get all this information, information from you, information from me, information from the public, put all this blunder and out comes a plan, the plan, I don't know if you were here when we talked, it has to be approved by both the board of selectmen and the planning board before it gets sent to the state for official, uh, adoption.
And the plan would include possible by law changes or?
Yep.
So you, so you really have, you have to actually do.
Actions.
Everything before you.
Yeah, so we, it doesn't have to be incredibly, you know, you'd say, we'd like to look at adopting an accessory dw, dwelling, uh, accessory dwelling unit by law, and then explain it in a paragraph, you don't need to.
You don't have to actually research changing the by law, okay?
No, 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 they wanna see that, like, so in the next five years, the plans are good for five years, once approved by the state, so with the next five years, you know, you tell the state, we're gonna be working on that, and they're like, no, that's good, good job, you know, um, it shows, these plans show that the town is interested in producing housing. So, and, and if, at the end of five years, you didn't do anything, nothing happens, they're not gonna yell at you or anything, or, you know, take money away or something.
So that does bring me to some questions, such as, once we start working on a plan, does that, um, give us any flexibility, should a forty B, an aggressive, uh, forty B, rather than a friendly forty B, application come before the town?
No.
I also sort of wondered, does it wave a red flag for forty B developers saying, we should get in here before, okay?
No, they'd be already.
And what are the, I mean, we talked about forty B, are there any other advantages, such as opening the door to additional funding or, you know, what? I know when we were working on our library master plan, that opened the door to access to some funding or whatever, so what are the other advantages?
To do, to do in the forty B, I, I don't know if, Colleen?
No, not doing the forty B.
I'm Colleen.
You're Colleen, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if she was here, but we talked about the certification, did you hear about certify?
Yeah, so.
And if you develop a certain number of units, that's one of the big carrots in the Housing Production Plan, is if you develop half a percent of the total housing units that are affordable in a year, the zoning board of appeals can, can, uh, reject a forty B application.
Okay, yeah, I remember hearing that.
So that's, that's one of the carrots of, of, of the program, but, you know, there are a number, number, uh, there's a lot of different agencies and resources that have, uh, funding available and are willing to work with you, um, God, I can, this is a bunch of them.
And is it funding only for, uh, strictly the affordable housing unit or people, or does it kind of expand in some way? I don't know, like, if we do a cluster with an open space area, would it allow for more public access to that area or something like that?
Yeah, but, I mean, most of those agencies, like Housing Solutions for Southeast Mass, formerly South Shore Housing, um, they're mostly focused on developing affordable units.
Still, it's, it's income that helps.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, you know, they're able to work with you, I don't know how the Woodlands was developed, I mean, you worked with HUD and D H E D, I don't know who was there for that, but, um, so, you know, those agencies got involved and provided, you know, subsidies to, to make it all happen, so there are a number of agencies out there that are more than happy to help with this, uh, with these programs and, uh, you know, we can call, they'll be down here tomorrow, but, um, you know, that's up to the town if they wanna do that. I mean, the old Colleen Planning Council, us as an agency are always here for, for the town, you know, you wanna develop a by law, we're more than happy to do that. We have a stream of funding we usually get every year, the L T A, and you can do it at no charge, just like this plan, um, so, so there are, you know, there are, um, a lot of resources out there, um, just gotta decide what, kinda what you wanna do, and that's kinda why I'm here, is to just, to help you, you know, guide you and to listen to you and how you want this plan developed, um.
How long do you think it'll take?
Depends, I mean, it depends on how, how involved you wanna get into the plan, you know, how, how, how detail-oriented you want to get. I'm doing other, plans in other communities, but, uh, you know, we have, you know, people back there, it's not like I only do one at a time, I can do multiple at, at each time, um. So, looking at it now, looking, you know, just off the top of my head, maybe we could have a plan by September.
Wow, and how much time do you think that would take on our parts?
It's gonna take some time on your part, basically, to meet with me, um, you know, I'm gonna go back to the office with the notes I wrote here today, look at these projections, I'm gonna have to run them by you, I mean, we can do that via email too, um, say, hey, these are the projections I got from other places, you guys like these better than those, you know, how do you like the layout of this plan, we're gonna have to talk about what implementation or action strategies, I can provide you with drafts of all this and we don't have to come and meet, uh, you know, and discuss it at that point, say, I'm gonna send you this, tell me what you think, you know, and at the meeting, we can kinda hammer out the details. I can get, and, you know, it can take you as long or a short amount of time, some towns don't really do public input, and they're just like, the consultant meets with the committee and just do it. So, if you want more public input, it's gonna take a little longer, but that's, you know, fine.
Do you have examples of types of projects? Cause I, I strangely enough agree with Carolyn, that, that a mixed setting is better than, you know, an over fifty-five community or something.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
And I know it's, you know, you can do a, a Plimpton village within Plimpton, and it's.
I'm in, I'll sell my house.
Right.
Well done for Plimpton.
And why can't they all be affordable, you know? Like, do a strip of five or six homes where they're all affordable in this little.
Isn't there something like that in Easton, like a really cute village?
Uh, yeah, was it, uh, they did, um, they did shovel shaw, shovel, how do I call it, Shovel Town.
They have to be freestanding for people to.
They did, well, they have a couple of in Easton, they have, uh.
And those are affordable though, right?
But I think that's good.
I have to look, I don't, I don't remember, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought they were. Or, yeah, miss.
Shovel Town, they did, uh, with the old train station in Northeastern, they did Shovel Town Square, Shovel Town Shops, I forget the name, it's somewhere shovel, that's where the old shovel factory was, and they, um, they made that, uh, town put in considerable funds to make that, because it was historic, they had to repurpose the whole thing.
There's a, a big one in Cambridge too, that's very mixed use, very, very, mixed ages and.
And mixed use.
Supports the arts and everything else.
Yeah, like, I think.
It'd be nice to get something with a little community center too, that would be ideal, to get a developer to pay for it.
We can, yeah, we can, I can, I can find the examples, that's not a problem, and, and, you know, send you kinda links and, you know, so you guys can look at it. Another thing I would advise you to do is look at other, you can look at other housing production plans, if you go to the state website, um, just Google Mass Housing Production Plan, and they have all the ones that have been approved by the state, they go up on this website, so if yours is approved, go on the state website, and you can look at other ones to see, like, oh, that's kinda interesting. And they're all, they're all done, set up differently, you know, I mean, you know, but.
So for clarification, I think the plan or project that, uh, Colleen was talking about is different from what we're gonna produce here, 'cause we would be producing, like, the, the actions and the goals, but you're saying, let's use some real examples of projects that have been developed, right?
Well, you can, you can look at these real examples.
Well, I, I would think you want them within your plan, so that the, the townspeople that are looking at your plan can say, this is what.
This is what our goal is, and this is how we're gonna get it.
Yeah, I think, I think that part of that is saying, we wanna look at this whatever thing in Cambridge, you know, we want it to look like that, well, how did that happen?
Exactly, how do we get that?
How did that, I think that's the key, is how did that happen, you know? It'd be nice to, to do that, but how did they do it? Did they do it through different zoning actions, did they do it through setting up a housing trust, did they do it through whatever? I think those actions are what's gonna be included in the plan, maybe you can reference it, like, you know, in the hopes of becoming, you know, the artist village in Cambridge or whatever it's called, uh, but I think, I think you can reference it in there, but.
I'm sixty-two next year, I'm moving in.
The resident artist.
Oh my gosh, oh boy.
So I, I think that's, I think those are, you know, those are ideas that, these are all, these are great ideas, and that's, that's kinda what I'm looking for here, is, 'cause I can give you the canned responses of what ninety percent of these plans have, and it's like, do this, do, do this, do that, you know, and, you know, I, you know, the plan is, the idea is to get behind the plan, so, you know, once I've done, once I've done the plan, and, I mean, it's not like I'm going anywhere, but if you need me to come back next year and say, hey, let's do a refresh, let's, you know, what you've been doing, you know, is to, uh, not let it sit on a shelf, as, as planners, that's like our biggest fear, is doing a plan and then it sits on a shelf, it's like, oh, you know, that was good for the five people.
Well, we should have a high-stakes performance assessment test to force you to keep, force the town to keep going.
So, that's, uh, that's, that's a plan, we do a lot of plans, a lot of them sit on things, or they, only five people are gonna read them, these five people, so, you know, we want it to become an instrument to, to move forward, you know, and, and, you know, we can only do so much, you know, as the planning agency, we're only advisory in nature, I have no regulatory authority to do anything, but we can give you the support and tools, we, you can do something and we can be here cheering you on and helping you in the background, which, which we hope to do.
Perfect, um, yeah, so next time, could you, uh, spell out a little bit more in detail how a housing trust works? We, we don't have to do it now, 'cause I'm getting the signal.
Sure, yep, no, that's fine.
And hint, wink, wink.
And I made, I made Christine promise to get you over here.
Yeah, this is.
Tailed. Well, I see I'm giving you the signals, time to close it up.
Like I said, I'm here as long as you want, um, the, there's, the state passed an act to make it easier to set up, uh, municipal affordable, municipal housing trusts. So there is an act that, that, um, that helps you guide it, it used to be more of a pain, but it's not as much of a pain anymore, um, but I'll get, I think John wanted a list of towns, we'll get you how to do this, uh, you have C P A, which is a great start, so you have some type of.
And we haven't touched that.
We haven't touched it, so.
Not the housing fund, no.
So you have, you have funding, I know, uh, some towns are trying to do a housing plan and they have no money, it's like, we got nothing, it's like, oh, I, I mean, it's only so much I could do, but, you know, moving forward will identify sites for potential housing too, um, you know, you said you had town-owned land.
We'll let you know where the town's land is. But you know, maybe we could, um, do something where we can get the Z B A, I don't know if the Z B A could waive the, the lot requirement if these were.
Well, it would be a friendly forty B.
Yeah, like a friendly forty B for one house.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, Habitat for Humanity could do that.
So that's, yeah, I mean, yep, uh, that'd be up to the Z B A.
But no four hundred foot long driveways.
No.
Can I say one thing about the housing trust? Just, um, you folks are better in touch with how folk, other people in the town feel, but, um, like, knowing our audience.
Sure.
When you first said it, like, it seemed a little attractive to me, but I'm thinking of some older folks I know that, um, think that's highway robbery, and so in presenting it to people, I certainly wouldn't want them to think that, and maybe it's not the greatest thing, 'cause I happen to believe it's highway robbery also, I mean, I, I mean, I'd go with the group, but.
Yeah, I just don't know what they are or how they work, so.
Yeah, it just sounded to me.
I can give you some additional information on that, maybe I can email some additional information on. I can give you some additional information on that, maybe I can email some additional information on what it like a municipal housing trust is, what are some examples, how do they spend their money, that sort of thing. Um, you know, different towns and, and how they've spent it. Again, it's, um, you know, for people who, you know, affordable, you know, affordable housing, housing issues, it does, um, it can seem like that, I totally agree. You know, I'm talking with, uh, you know, I'm on the zoning board of appeals in my town, and we have a forty B in front of us, and we have a lot of angry people, because this forty B is gonna go right next to them on a five thousand square foot lot, and they have a forty thousand square foot lot. So, I totally understand where the anger's coming from, and is it fair, you know, sometimes it's not fair, you know, especially people who've been there, and they're like, hey, I, I bought my house like this, and I want it like this, and I totally, I totally agree. And, uh, you know, it can be a sensitive topic as well, you know, it's like, why should my money go for this? And there's a lot of that type of stuff going on too. Um, you know, I'll, you know, seek guidance of the t, the town, you know, as to how, you know, how, how much you wanna get into certain topics and stuff. I can float ideas and, you know, you say, nah, I think we'll stay away from that, that's fine. Again, that's what I, that's what I'm here for, uh, these meetings are public, and, you know, people wanna come out, we can, we can talk about it, I mean, you know. So there, this is the Affordable Housing Committee we're talking with?
Housing Production Plan.
Okay, alright, so, yeah.
Cause I kept calling it that, and it's like that.
Some towns call it the municipal, uh, the Housing Partnership, or, you know, there's a lot of different names you can give it. Um, but it's, um, you know, it's just not, we call it the Housing Production Plan, uh, we don't call it Affordable Housing Plan. It's an interchangeable term, but it's just not looking at affordable housing, it's looking at housing options, as you can see, you know, from the data we had. It's all single-family houses, so it's like, maybe, you know, we can diversify some of the housing, doesn't necessarily have to be affordable, but it's, you know, providing options for folks who live here, John, who might wanna, maybe a duplex would've been good for him.
Maybe, maybe we can attempt to move into.
Or we can.
You're gonna fill up where it's even built.
The home for retired.
Exactly, yeah, actually, that would be Berry too, right?
Yeah, that would be Berry too.
Dream of connecting our homes and just filling it with everybody.
So you have a little village of old, of retired swatmen.
Yeah, yeah. That way, you know, when you wanna just tar and feather them, you know where to find them all.
Oh, you were on that board when.
Yeah, exactly, what did you do? Um, where do we, so where do we do, where do we go now?
So, you know, some of the discussion, you know, points I had here, you know, wanted to hear about, you know, barriers, opportunities, kinda get.
A little bit of homework?
Yeah, a little bit of homework from what you folks, what do you think should be included in the plan, tell me, I, you know, I, I have an idea of what your barriers are, you know, uh, in terms of, you know, planes, and, you know, your zoning, and that type of stuff. I wanna know from the town, I mean, I can only do so much data, you know, so much research as to what it is, um.
Well, and I think perception is gonna be one of our barriers as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is, is it just that I'm, I need Jane in this card?
Not just physical barriers, but some perception too.
Oh, that's, that's a huge thing, is perception, yeah, I mean, that's why, you know, one of the first one, you know, of our first strategies would be to, you know, educate the public, we have an annual housing summit, um, i- is, is a popular idea, where, you know, I could come down, somebody could come down and talk about, you know, housing, we'd have a, have it at night, you could have it whenever you want, um, develop some literature, um, as to what it is, you know, cause there are a lot of misconceptions about it, there are a ton of misconceptions about it. Um, you know.
The financial piece is gonna be big, 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 big.
Yep.
As it is with all towns, but I think our town is, you know, we're so sensitive, we just, you know, we feel everything as soon as we implement something, there's no fat in our budget.
Yep, yep, yeah, and we don't wanna get you in something that's over the edge, you know, I mean, that's the last thing we wanna do, cause I, before I served on the zoning board, I was the chairman of the finance committee in my town, so, uh, I know how it comes.
Are you sure you don't wanna work the?
Yeah, I know, I know, man.
We'll give you our barn.
Barn, okay.
Yeah, you could probably live in this like this house.
So, so I know, coming from that, sitting on that side of it, is like, well, what's this gonna cost? What's this gonna cost five years from now, it's gonna cost twenty years from now, you know, when I'm not here, so, um. So another, you know, housing goals, what do you think Plimpton's housing goals should be? I know some of this is, you know, a little, uh, a little early for this, but just to kinda get your, uh, kinda get your mind moving, this is in your packet, so you can take it home with you.
Okay.
Um, you know, specific housing opportunities, um, anything you know of worth replicating, I mean, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, it's been invented for most parts.
And you had some ideas that we should explore.
So, um, next step is, you know, kind of incidentally, uh, this is just a draft of ideas, you know, develop goals and strategies, you know, share the strategies, obviously, we're gonna do a public outreach component with the survey. Um, this, I developed all this, again, all my own foodie net tonight, um, you know, it's gotta go, you know, the last stages will be submitting it to our planning board in the selectmen, and then submitting it for review and approval, um, that's me. Uh, so if you need to get in touch with me, my contact information, that's my direct line.
Okay, is it in the back of this?
It's in the back, yep.
Okay.
My email address, I can get it offsite too, so I found my way for a few days, uh, you know, I can check my email. Um, our website has information on it, and we're also on Twitter, we don't do it a lot, but we're trying to be.
Only at three in the morning.
Up to date, you know, I don't even control the Twitter, so that's.
When you're angry, um.
Yeah, it's not my cell phone, it's just my work phone.
In, in terms of getting community input, you know, I, we may wanna talk to Debbie Batson about the process that was used, and it was led by the state, you know, the library board of commissioners, consultant, but, um, it was a really neat model for bringing people together in something better than a focus group. Um, and it only required something like two meetings, but because the people who were engaged as participants in the conversation had been sort of very carefully thought out, it, I think it really ended up being a plan that everybody could get behind. Um, as opposed to some of the stuff that happens when you do have community, open houses, um, people just don't come because they're already turned off of the idea, and so, we may wanna think about that in addition to a survey.
Well, I'd love to get, right, some seniors serving on this committee with us.
Yeah, I mean, you know, people who were affected by it, just getting a variety of different responses.
For some young people that would, you know, like, they're living with their parents, they would love to live in Plimpton, just to get a variety.
We could do those, you know, we can do those open houses, we can do whatever you want, I mean, it's a variety of different things, you know, we can have these little stations set up, and we can show you different types of houses, and a power point, and little boards and stickers, and all of that kinda stuff, we could do, you know.
Can we have an interactive map of Plimpton?
We can do, yeah.
Oh, good lord.
You wanna interactive map, I can, I can.
Let's not use all the money, Carolyn.
Make it three D.
Three D, with virtual reality.
Yeah, virtual tour.
And avatars.
You guys are expected to deal with here, we have to stop building now.
Yeah, exactly. She asked me to come.
We do have a, we do have a G I S coordinator in our office, uh, I don't know if you've met Andrew Christine.
Yeah.
So he said, he, he can create any type of map you want, uh, using, you know, he can pretty much do anything, and, you know, we can get big posters in here, thirty-three by forty-four, we can do, you know, whatever, whatever you guys want, so you come up with an idea, we can put it on a map, he's, he's a whiz, so he can do mean out so much, until we get them. So, he can, he can do, uh, whatever we want, and usually a quick turnaround time, we've done posters for police departments and highway departments, all kinds of other stuff, so, um, so we've done, and I've done work in Plimpton before, I'm not new to Plimpton. I worked with Chief Dillon, um, you know, trying to get the emergency dispatch over to Duxbury.
And you did our hazard mitigation plan.
Did the hazard mitigation plan for not only Plimpton, but fourteen other towns, so, that was, uh.
And our energy consortium?
Energy Aggregation, I did that, I did the hazard mitigation plan, so, um, the regionalization thing, so, um, so we've done a lot.
Yeah, you have done.
We've done a lot in Plimpton, so it's not new to us, we don't, uh, we, we know you're here, we do a lot of traffic studies, uh, you know, the, the.
Yeah, you helped us with the NEPA response to the urban renewal plan, yeah.
I went on the site visit, I went, and we walked the site all the way to the back, and, uh, it was pretty interesting. You know, they said, uh, they had a bunch of stumps there, and I was like, what's this? And they were like, oh, tree stumps, it was like a tree, tree, uh, tree dump, I didn't know it was such a thing.
A stump dump.
Stump dump, but they had to remove them all, I thought they just broke down over time, but I guess, if they put them, so many stumps in that tight area, it releases sometimes weird chemicals or something, so they have to remove.
Sinkholes, yeah.
Yeah, so they have to remove all these stumps, but it's a pretty impressive area, it's like three hundred acres of, and you can see, actually, you see Middleborough, you can see the town dumping Middle Pearl from there, but it's, it's pretty much, uh, barren. So you can see three of you standing, like, wow, this is what Virginia looks like, you know, it's, it's pretty impressive, so, you know, we'll continue with that, because they're gonna, and they're gonna issue an environmental impact report, and then we can comment on.
Yeah, I thought something was due on the seventeenth, of March? Yes, of March, I thought they said that they would approve it, or either approve it or disapprove it.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna probably issue a, they'll probably say that you're gonna need to do an environmental impact report, which is the next part.
Some type of decision, okay.
Yeah, and they're gonna say, they're gonna draw out a scope, and they're gonna say, based on all these letters we got, you gotta have to go back to the drawing board and look at this, 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 and this.
Perfect.
And then, that second report will, you know, look at some things we brought up, so, once that comes out, we'll look at it. It'll probably be a few months from now.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, we're more than happy to work with you on that, so, as well.
Awesome. So, the next step would be, you're gonna be giving us some information via email, so I'll gather everybody's email addresses, provide it to you, and then, um, you'll give us that information, maybe we look at it, digest a little bit, and then set up another meeting?
Yep.
Perfect.
So, uh, this correspondence is part of the open meeting law?
Um, this is just a kickoff meeting, so, um,
I'm just saying.
We had an agenda, I'll do some, some minutes, um, but, um.
You're not on the committee.
No, what I meant, what I meant was, um, I misspoke, I'm wondering if I should set up a separate email account, just so that if.
Yeah, set up a Gmail account.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, different towns are different, I, you know, I have, I was on the zoning board finance committee, I, I don't have an email.
He's rubbing that in.
I just.
I know, but he won't come here.
I know.
I don't know how it's acted.
He'll come, once the housing gets affordable, cause our schools are excellent, you know. And there, there are a lot of aging people who would love to be sort of foster grandparents to their children.
He's working you over.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh.
And there's a nice little three acre parcel down the road.
I actually, I, I like it, I like it.
Actually, you know what, let me, um, get everybody's email addresses right now, actually, I've got yours.
Yes.
Alright, so she'll have to give me one.
I might give you, uh, a new one.
I, I grew up in Brockton, I went to Brockton High, I still live here.
She's, um, that's the way she is.
If there's a public records request.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, so just have another one. So you can keep the one I have, but I might just update it.
No problem, alright, no problem.
The other day was, uh, thinking about my hometown, and, you know, just trying to predict.
It would just be easier if it was all on one place.
Well, and maybe every committee member will be getting a town.
And, you know, we, my parents moved out of there right after, uh, Colorado has, I don't know when, set up something for two months, anybody can go through.
Now, we all sent the.
We are all sent, thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Take care.
Alright, so I will see you tomorrow, Eric.